Glad of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Is Commissioner Schmidt with us?
I am here.
Good afternoon.
I don't know what's good.
Jake, are we ready to go? So everybody's signed in. I just need a motion to approve the agenda.
I so moved, Madam Chair.
So moved, Madam Chair.
I have a motion by Gibbon, a second by Aaron's. Sean or Sherry, call the roll, please. You're not Sean.
I'm not Sean. Commissioner Aaron's.
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins.
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon.
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt.
Yes.
Commissioner Landin.
Yes. We have our opportunity for public comment. Anyone on Zoom or in the audience wish to speak? If not, we'll move on to regular business.
What causes the echo?
I have no idea.
Jake is going to give us.
Jake's going to tell us. Is he on speakerphone? You're on speakerphone, Commissioner. Are you off a speakerphone? All right. So item one on our agenda is a recommendation from the selection committee for the architect, engineer services on the proposed justice center. Is Dick Strasberg on? Okay, if you're not going to be speaking, please put your phone on mute and take it off of speakerphone, please. All right. Dick, were you going to address this item?
Yeah, please, yeah.
Yep, go ahead. Just make sure you're speaking into your microphone.
Okay, can you hear me well?
Yep.
Okay, so Dick Strasberg with Tegra. We went through the process here of writing an RFP, publishing an RFP. At the track of it, we had three firms that responded. It was DLR out of Omaha, and their local partner was JLG. And then we had BKV out of Minneapolis, and their local partner was Arkane. We had Elevators, partway in Indiana, and their local partner was RSA. And we went through and we got some three good proposals. And with the selection criteria for experience and qualifications with courthouse and jail, availability of the team, history of the team working together, self-care experience with things such as, you know, construction management, rest, cold climate, local codes, and then the proposal and the interview, their response, and their proposed fee and their reimbursements. And so the selection committee was Commissioner Aaron's and Commissioner Landin, Larry Nelson and Paul Paulson from the advisory committee, and Sherry Lund and Bill Golden, the president of staff. So we went through, got the proposals, did pretty extensive interviews, spent a lot of time on it, appreciated everyone's time on it on the committee. And after going through this, the committee selected DLR with their local partner, JLG. So we've got the scorecards, a summary of the scorecards up on the screen. As you can see, the JLG and DLR were strong in most areas. This is a combination of six people, six people that were on the interview team. Tegra doesn't vote, we just organized a process. And this low score is the highest. So JLG ended up with 107, next was BKV, Arkane with 157, and Elevators RSA at 198. So that was, that's what I call, that's part of the selection process. Because the way we do this is we go through and we ask the committee to, you know, to score these, and to be thinking about, or let's say, how they're going to, how they're thinking about these items, and each one of these things, facts, history, working together, approach, all these things. Then we open up the fee. And the fees in this case were probably the biggest spread I've seen in my career. After 35 years, I don't think you're going to see something new, but we did here. Fees range on, if it's a courts project, ranged from 5.5% to 8.75%. So you can imagine there's a lot of discussion on it. Elevators was low, and DLR, JLG was high, BKV was in the middle. So there's a lot of discussion on that, to determine, is it worth the extra dollars to go to the one with the higher fee? We can tell you that if you asked us before the interview, and maybe even stated this week, anticipated fees would be 8 to 9%, because that's what we typically see. Elevators has an interesting approach, because they've got a prototype for a jail, and I think that's how they're able to get to, you know, lower fees, which is, it's an innovative approach, a little bit like McDonald's, where you just, you know, you site adapt the building, and basically for a 216-person jail, they've done it, I think, three or four other times. If we're just doing a jail, that's pretty attractive. But when you're saying, looking at the courts, really, DLR, JLG, that team has substantially more experience on the court side. They've got, they came with a person named Robert Finch. He's spent his whole career, 35 years of experience doing courts. So he has seen it all, he's seen every kind of court, and has a new trend, and is really a court expert. They also had Martin Bergman, who was a jail expert. And besides that, I think we've got three teams that are strong on jails. All three teams are very, very strong on jails. But the DLR team with JLG really stood out on the courts. I think that's probably the primarily, primary reason why the committee went in this direction. Obviously, there's a lot of compelling reasons on some of these things, too, where you have the, you know, just even on the approach, approaching the project as a team, you know, they were, they scored high on that. Team history of the team was high. And I think for those sitting in the interviews, it became pretty obvious as we, as we went through, even before the discussion, there was a, there's a strong attitude towards, towards each group, because they, they pretty much hit the bull out of the park during the, you know, it's a very strong proposal, and just very, very qualified people. So that's, that was the direction that the committee went. So then I think we'll probably open it up for questions.
Does anybody have any questions for Mr. Strasberg?
The host would like you to unmute. Your microphone is being turned off.
If you're not addressing the board or speaking, please mute your phone. Commissioner Poppins, do you have questions for Mr. Strasberg?
Madam Chair, thank you. I don't want to manipulate time, so I'll try to stop, because I do have quite a few questions to go through this process. Just so we're clear, Mr. Strasberg, the range was 5.5 to 8.75, you said? For fees?
Oh, Dick, you're muted right now.
Okay, yeah, the combination, we have other combinations, that's, if we do the base of just the courts. And that's, it's pretty consistent. It bumps up, if you do everything, courts, sheriff, and jail, then it bumps up to 9.95%.
Oh, sorry, I missed the first part of that. You lost 9.9, what was that?
So if we do the courts, courts-related functions, sheriff's office, and a jail, and if you do everything, the JLR team was at 9.95%. They're at 8.75% if you, if you don't do the jail.
Well, we do have a service today. Madam Chair, I would like some discussion amongst maybe the commission and the board members. What are we actually going to be trying to look and go to the public to build? I mean, that's a huge, it's a huge question of what our needs are versus what the appetite might be from the taxpayers' perspective of what they feel like they'd be willing to allow us to move forward for the future. We presented a pretty cost-conscious approach to a public safety center that was completely shot down, and which left us some funds at that time to build courtrooms as well, even in Canton here, of a $50 million project. I'm kind of curious what we're thinking at this point.
My question is for Dick. Dick, with what Commissioner Poppins just said, can you tell us, how do we get the cart behind the horse? I mean, what's the next step?
Okay, so the next step is, we engage this team, we go through the programming, and the programming will review what's already been done, because there's been a lot of good work that's already done, go through that, then start coming up with conceptual design ideas. And looking at it in terms of what combination, is it just courts, and so how many? And if it's a sheriff's office, and then if it's jail, how many beds, what amenities? And then we start putting numbers to it. I think it's important that we, the process will give us the results of the financial, you know, some parameters in terms of what it would take to meet the needs. Now, the big question is going to be, how long do you meet the needs? Because if you're to spend, you know, if you're to spend 30 million, 40 million, what does that buy us? Does that buy us, does that last for five years, 10 years? Does it meet the needs at all? Or is it longer? So, you know, this will quickly turn into a discussion about, how long are we building for? How long will it meet the needs? Because it's, unless I'm surprised, it'd be unlikely that you both would meet all the needs for the next 20 years. You know, a very big number. So it's probably more probable experience to tell us that you'll meet the needs for a certain length of time. And also, how confident are you on the growth of Lincoln County? If we look at the last couple of years, I mean, it's very, very rapid growth. Is that going to continue? If so, are you going to build for that? Are you going to build for something that takes shorter term to meet, say, seven or, you know, 10 years, or shorter term? But the process will get, will have contractor numbers on this. The next discussion item here is contractor as well. Because that way, we'll have, you know, live construction numbers that should help, you know, guide your decisions.
You know, coming out, I wasn't part of the courthouse advisory committee, but I think kind of the consensus that came from that group was that we wanted to add the sheriff's office and the jail. And so, and the jail being a need, and I think the sheriff's office is also getting the point of needing to be there, and it just makes sense. So where I'm at right now is, how do we get all of that? How do we get the most bang for the buck? So the fee split, and I understand the reasoning and the difference in the fees and what we had discussed in the interviews. So that's a big deal for me, I guess, today.
Madam Chair, a question to Dick. Can you give me an idea in dollars, if we were to do what Madam Chairman just spoke of, of trying to get the sheriff's office, the jail, courts, et cetera? Is, and we all cringe wanting to say how many dollars we're talking about, but somewhere in here, we got to talk dollars. Are we talking 60 million? Are we talking more? Are we talking less? And my ultimate question is going to be, I would need to compute what the differential is then from our, the high bid, low bid, in-between bid, because it's such a substantial difference in fee structure, it makes a huge impact on a project like this.
I think, you know, the probability, maybe you can tell me, but, you know, the idea of doing something that's, say, a $70 million or some, you know, big number to do everything, still about that.
Did you say 70?
I can't change the number on anything we want to here, but I mean, we did, you know, different times, 30 million or 40 million, or something like that.
Was the number you said 70? I didn't quite hear that.
Yeah, I don't know, I don't know what the number, we haven't, haven't been through the process to know how many square feet, how big a jail, how, you know, we don't know what the project is, and the process will define that. So it's hard to, you're kind of pulling a number out of the air. But we can tell you, it's a big number, bigger than anything that's been passed in South Dakota by any county in, at least in my recollection of it. But we all know the fastest-growing county by a long margin as well. I think we're kind of just speculating on cost right now, but if we're going to get, if you do a $30 million project, for example, $30 million projects is about a million-dollar, is roughly a million-dollar difference from low to high. And the part that makes it challenging is, if this is courts, if the committee and the commission is saying that we're for sure going to do courts, well, Elevators is a flying firm, but they have very limited courts experience, very, very limited, actually. They have one that they've done that's multiple courtrooms, and a few others that they were done, you know, last 20, 30 years. And our recommendation, obviously, when we're looking at the front end of these projects, and this is a hard decision, because these are, like, these are tangible dollars, they're real dollars, but the part that they haven't seen is the value of having a team with experience. I look at the, example on that would be the Minnehaha County courthouse. If you look at cost per foot compared to some others that were recently built, getting the right team to pull the dollars down, we can tell you that this won't be a couple, 3% difference at the end of, say, schematic design from budget. So I used to say it was 5% or 10%, now it's, I don't know, 10% to 30% or something. That's the same dollars. So our recommendation, obviously, is to go with the, go with the most qualified team, because we need the smartest people in the industry to help us figure out how do we get the most grit and mortar for the dollars. But this is a hard decision when it's, when you look at this big of a spread.
Anybody have any other questions for Mr. Strasberg?
Is there anybody that's listening or speaking that served on this committee that would like to chime in? Because this is, to me, is a substantial dollar. This isn't little chump change we're talking.
No, we're talking million, millions of dollars.
Millions, on the low side, million, multiple millions of dollars. And we've already, you know, looking at $15 million more from the delay from two years ago, and it keeps adding up. And we couldn't get it done the first time. Not saying what the reason was, but we didn't. We need to get this done and do it cost-effectively as well yet, so.
Madam Chairman.
Go ahead.
My name is Larry Nelson. I was not involved in any way, shape, or form in the first effort. I came on board after the first effort, and after it became apparent to me that the county needed to do something. And if I ever say we don't need to be, do the jail, and we don't need to do the courthouse, someone needs to talk to me, because that's been my position, continues to be my position. As it relates to the firms that we selected, you're going to see that what I call the local firm scored the best, and there were a number of reasons for that. And my priority was, is that they're local, they're here to stay, they have a track record, they did the Sioux Falls jail, Sioux Falls courthouse, and there are people that are not going to be here today and be gone tomorrow, and they're going to have to stand behind their product and think you're going to get a good quality product. One of the things I learned is that there are expensive ways to build jails, and there are more cost-effective ways in Sioux Falls. And I cannot give you the numbers on a square foot basis, but the Sioux Falls jail was built significantly cheaper, or less expensively than the Brookings jail was. And that's where I think we're going to end up, is that we're going to be able to build it on a square foot basis more cost-effective than the prefab model.
Well, to be fair, though, that C Mar came on very late in the project, and that was a huge reason for the cost of per square foot of that jail. It wasn't just the prefab numbers, but I just want to throw that in there.
But, Madam Chairman, I believe there was a significant difference in the per-cost square foot basis to Minnehaha County jail versus Brookings. And so I want to put that out to Commissioner Poppins, just to understand that those things were considered, and some of the dynamics that went into at least my decision, and I'm assuming most of the other commissioners.
I do want to make a statement concerning the two projects you spoke of, two completely different size, scope of projects, so it's hard to do, I would think, a comparison on a square foot basis between the Minnehaha County and the Brookings. I've visited and toured both facilities, significant scope of sale, a size differential there, I would think, would have came in.
I think the Brookings jail was beautiful. I thought it was a great, great project.
I think it's working well for what they need. But thank you. Again, it's just a tough decision, Mr. Nelson. I do want to thank you for, you and everyone that served on it. You know, we proposed a very cost-effective method the first time, and it's hard for me to believe that taxpayers would want to spend even more dollars to get a facility at this point, just based on architect, unless somebody wants to tell me they believe that either one or two of these firms could not do the project. So, and when we're looking at bid laws, and it's always advantageous to try to find somebody local as well, but I don't know if we get to discern just because of where they're from on selection criteria, so.
Yes, go ahead.
You, Commissioner Poppins asked the question from the committee, and maybe Joel has a comment as well, but the consensus was that they wanted to do the entire project, and that was for a purpose of looking long range, on what our needs were, how 20 years or so. So no one talked about any funds, but they did talk about the complete package, and for whatever that's worth. Joel, maybe you have a follow-up on that.
I'm not following the question or the comment there. Commissioner, who are you saying said that?
I was talking, I think it was Mr. Nelson that told us that subject, man. And that wasn't the consensus, that was just comments that were made. I don't think we ever voted on it, I don't think we ever came to any raising of hands, maybe Paul Paulson, Paul, if you're listening, maybe you have a comment.
Oh, I think I'm, so what you're saying, Commissioner Schmidt, is on the courthouse improvement committee, what was the consensus or the report out of that committee? And?
Yes.
Okay. So the, what we did take a vote on as a committee was, we endorsed a construction of a new courthouse with what I call the six-by-two model. It would have included eight courtrooms, with six being built out, and then two additional courtrooms would be a shell, or would be meeting rooms, that could be converted into courtrooms into the future. We did take a formal voice vote on that. That plan was endorsed by the committee. The committee did not endorse a jail. There was no discussion, there was light and brief discussion on the jail issue, but the committee did not take any position on the jail as a committee. There was only discussion about it. I think one of the committee members even said, we should do the same thing, i.e., a courthouse improvement committee, do the same thing for the construction of a jail, to have the same kind of inquiry about it. And then with regard to whether we should add the sheriff's office, state's attorney's office, and public defender's office onto that, I believe, and please, and we've got Chad and Larry here in the room, and thank you, both of you, for your service to the committee, and please correct me if I'm wrong, I believe that we added the square footage for a sheriff's office and for state's attorney, public defender's office into that six-by-two plan. And please correct me if I'm wrong, but I think I'm drawing upon that. That's what the courthouse, and Commissioner Schmidt, please correct me if I'm wrong, that's what we took a formal voice vote on and approved. Am I remembering that correctly, gentlemen?
That is correct.
Yes. So that's what our discussion was about.
Madam Chair.
Go ahead.
So then I'm looking for a little direction or clarification, then. So when you were looking at architectural firms, was it with extreme prejudice that we were only looking at doing court, courtrooms? So I'm a little confused by the statement that was just made, if you weren't having discussions on, or making much comments concerning jails, how did this come into play when you were discussing what firms are the best for the project? Because if you're doing a jail, that's half, you're doing a court, that's half. We had a comment that if we were just doing jails, we had a very cost-conscious type of way of doing that, and that firm did not come out on the top. I'm just really confused, I guess, as to the thought process that took place, and the selection process that took place then as well, so.
No, there was, so we had three individual firms, I won't name their names right now, I guess they're up on the board there, sorry. We had three firms that put in, responded to the RFP for architects, and all three of them gave presentations that encompassed courthouse, state's attorney, sheriff's office, and jail. All three of them came in and gave presentations. I would say that all of the applicants knew full well going into the presentation, they briefed us and spoke to us in the interview, as if it could be what I'd call the complete package, or it could be smaller portions thereof. And all the committee members, obviously, were briefed, we had the same presentations. And so the committee members were not looking at this through blinders or with a soda straw, so to speak. I believe, and Chad and Larry are here, they can speak to this, I think the presentations were made, you know, with the notion or idea that the project could be the whole project. And so thus, the individual participants on the committee were grading and giving feedback and scoring as if it could be the whole project, or it could just be its constituent parts. And I'll let Chad and Larry speak to that, they were the citizen members, if they want to.
Commissioner Aaron's, if I may ask a question, it might clarify this, I may be following then. My question is regarding to the, why only voting on the courthouse? Was the vote only to clarify that you were supporting eight courtrooms with the six of them being built out and two being left? Was that actually the vote, was just to be, that was the size of the courthouse to be built?
So there's two different, so Commissioner Poppins, good question. So you're talking about two different processes. So you're talking about two different processes here. The vote, I think that you just asked your question about, is the courthouse improvement committee. And that committee met seven, eight, nine times, for hour, hour and a half apiece, sometimes two hours at a piece. And that vote, we only considered it our mandate to have a discussion about the courthouse, because I think this commission had previously voted to create the courthouse improvement committee, and as part of the scope of our discussion was only to talk about a courthouse. We didn't have a mandate to talk about a jail.
Thank you. That's where the confusion is, you were bringing in the other committee into this. So this committee never actually held any vote as to what should be built?
Which committee?
Which committee?
The, when you were dealing with the architects, when you were going through the process, there was no discussion on that committee, in the interview process, about what should be considered to be built, when you were trying to make determination as to which architect firm would rank higher or not?
No, the interviews that we had with the architects were about the full package.
Okay. So, I just wanted to clarify that what Commissioner Aaron said, as relates to what is on the board, was accurate.
These architects, they handed out briefing packets, and they presented PowerPoints and presentations, and all of their PowerPoints and their briefing materials included what I'll call the whole package to the entire committee. So, the committee, whose vote you see on the screen there, was making its assessment and determination on architects on the basis of courthouse, offices, and jail. We looked at the whole scope of services, or the whole scope of the project, when we made our grades.
And we did. When we, and Commissioner Aaron's is correct, I mean, we weren't grading the fee structure. We didn't, that wasn't really a big part of our interview process, and we were given that after, and as you can see from the score sheet, the fee was not taken into consideration with the score.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Commissioner Aaron, or Madam Chair, both of you served on that, and forgive me, Kent, it's a little hard to understand what he's saying. Is the fee structure, he was speaking if it was adjusted. Could you clarify for me, so I understand what he was trying to talk about? Do you know? Or do we need to ask him that again?
I think we should let, and I understand it, we're getting a lot of static from Dick appearing over the Zoom.
So...
I agree. You know, if you've got a question, Commissioner Poppins, let's see if we can get Dick available to answer that.
You're not familiar with what he was talking about?
He presented new information to us just now, about 8.9 versus 9.5, and I think he's just presenting it, we were presented with all of the fee structure.
Okay.
What he is doing, I think, is aggregating the fees now, based on the whole project versus its constituent parts. And we didn't have a, you know, we, Dick Strasberg's firm deliberately created a blind process where we conducted our grading before looking at the fee structures, so as to prevent the committee members from, you know, evaluating, letting cost prejudice their decision as to who is the best firm to handle the project.
Just so you're also clear on the process, when we voted, we voted by secret ballot.
Yes, thank you. Madam Chair, could we clarify what he was then speaking of concerning the adjusting fee structure?
Yes. Dick, you were really static, you and you were explaining the difference in the fee structures. Can you go through that again for us, please?
We asked each firm to provide a fee based on the type of project it would be. For example, if it was just courts and courts-related functions, each provided a fee, and if it was courts plus, courts and courts-related function plus the sheriff's office, that would be, let's call that, first one A, next one's B, you know, that scenario. And C would be if they did the courts, courts-related functions, sheriff's office, and the jail.
So...
So the firms...
Yeah, go ahead.
So, we've got different fees, because jails typically are more complicated than courts. So if we look at it for courts and courts only, the fees ranged from 5.5 to 8.75%. And if we go to the other extreme, if we did it with everything, it went from 5.5 to 9.95%.
You said 9.95?
Yes.
So, and I thought I heard you correctly the first time, and I ran some quick, did some quick math. So, we're looking, you know, if it was, let's say it's a $60 million project, my issue is that there's a almost, well, it's more than $2.5 million difference just in the fee alone. And so that's where I'm struggling. If we're going to have a contract manager that's going to make sure that the documents are correct in the way that they need to be, in working with an architect, I'm really trying to, in my mind, justify the difference in that fee.
And I, Madam Chair, I definitely need to clarify something he just said, if I may.
Go ahead.
Dick, I don't want to quote you incorrectly, so, am I correct? You had indicated, I think, just now, that a jail is the more complicated than the courts to bill?
Yes, that's correct, unless you do a prototype jail like Elevatus was proposing.
Okay.
Or at least, that's what we believe, that their presentation, obviously, as all of you know that were involved with it, they focused, you know, a fair amount on that. They've got a 5.5% fee all the way across for doing the courts, and, you know, all the way through a completed jail.
And I, again, want to thank all of the committee in interviewing the three that did do the RFP this time around. I, you know, participated in the first go-around a couple of years ago, and talked into quite a different, quite a range of different architects at that time. And it still comes back to what we were building, and trying to build the most cost-effective project for the taxpayers of the county. And it was not going to be a Taj Mahal, it was not going to be anything that was, not going to be, you know, advantageous to the community by any means, but it's extremely, it was extremely conscious to not spend any more money than had to be done. We're looking at a fee structure that is substantially, or very wide, and it's an extreme burden, I think, for the commission to justify why to spend that much more money, but that's why we're here to talk about it, so.
Anybody have any other questions?
If I could jump in with something that we've seen on other projects. We encourage going through and hiring the absolute best talent at the front end, because this percentage here controls the rest of the pie. So this slice of the pie controls the rest of it, because they're the ones making, you know, many of the ideas for you to consider, coming up with the schemes, coming up with the options. So, our recommendation is always to hire the best talent, and to make sure it makes sense for the dollars that you're spending. And, again, I would stress that the fees we see here, which are very tangible, they're very easy to understand, at this point, experience tells me that we get to, the reason we want to push for the best team, and encourage you to hire the best team, is because when you get to the, push comes to shove, you know, they all have the same amount of, they all got to produce the same thing allegedly, but somehow that isn't always the case. It's quality of drawings, and it's quality of ideas. So, we have found that if we hire the best people, you end up with the lowest-cost project. And if, and in this case, the committee concluded that the best, ones that had the best people and the best approach, was the firm that they recommended. We believe that the dollars on that will shape out as it goes through the process.
Madam Chair?
Go ahead.
Commissioner Gibbons, a question, you've got the freshest look at this. You've heard from taxpayers when you were being elected, your perspective on, you know, indication of what was selected by the committee versus a, when I ran just some quick numbers, two, over $2.5 million differential in fee structure, what is your thought, if I may ask you, please?
I guess I, my thoughts are, that's why we hired a consulting firm to give us this information. And I think he has, I looked at the data, and I think we have to follow through with the recommendation that I see with the data presented.
So you're okay with the higher fee, that's almost twice as much?
Well, I think he's explained it, that...
I understand he has explained it, are you okay with that?
I'm okay with it, because that's the recommendation that he is making.
Okay.
Madam Chair, Paul Paulson, speaking.
Hi, yep, go ahead, Paul.
When the advisory committee started, we were, we toured the Lincoln County courthouse right there where you're at, and looked at those courtrooms, we went to Sioux Falls, toured the Sioux Falls courthouse, and a little bit of the jail there. And the more we talked in our committee, is where the justice center came into play, then we toured the Brookings jail, and we became more, I feel, we became more strongly with the idea that we wanted the whole complex. And I believe, I don't know what the cost is, I mean, I hear you guys are pulling around numbers, I, in our committee, we didn't talk about any numbers, because we don't know what they're going to be. And, but I do believe it needs to be together, we need both courtrooms and the jail for what we're spending now a year for the jail, and for a courtroom in Sioux Falls. I can't see that that makes any sense to continue doing that at all. And I believe, along with Dick, that if the cost is a little more upfront, it'd probably save us that much in the end, so that's just my feeling on it. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Schmidt, do you have anything to add?
I must explain to you right now that I am doing this in a doctor's office. I have a issue with a wife who has discovered a heart situation, so if I have to mute myself, or have to leave, or forgive me. However, I look at this, I thought a lot about this, and Commissioner Poppins, while you're, I understand where you're coming from, trying to equate quality and looking at the future versus the dollars that we're going to have to spend. But I think Paul has encapsulated the feelings that were expressed by this committee, following all the evaluations that they had, the visitations that they had, the discussions that they had. And they did have a vote, I understand what Commissioner Aaron just said, which is right. However, we have to make that determination as to what we're going to look like in 25 years. We just had a committee, a fan committee, come in that evaluated our budget, and they had talked about the situation where we're going to be in the next 10 years, we're going to be over 100,000 people. Well, that's only 10 years from now, or if you look 9 years from now, what will our needs be at that time? So I think that in order for us to really do a justice to the taxpayers and to our future, that we have to look at the entire issue of courtrooms, a jail, a sheriff, and not even put the state's attorney there, because by doing all of that, you've also freed up room within your courthouse itself for future expansion, whatever that may be, in treasures, or auditor's offices, and all the rest of the things that go along with growth. So that's kind of encapsulating where I am on this situation.
Madam Chair, may I ask a question?
Go ahead.
This is for the auditor, I'm probably not prepared for this, but hopefully she is. When we're talking maybe per million, what is our current levy projection at all? Could you help me out on that?
I don't have the current levy projection, but I do have last year's, and it was, if you'll give me a minute, I'll pull it up.
Thank you, Madam Auditor.
Because I'm not prepared.
Dick, a question for you, if I may, point blank, do you believe, or that any of the three that applied would not be able to do the project?
Well, I think any three of them can do that, I mean, either they've never done any building, most architects can come up with a design on something they've, you know, on a project type they've never done before. And I'm going simply by the committee input here, and that is, the committee felt that it was best to hire the firm that had the most experience and the most qualified people on that. And that's pretty consistent with what we see most selection committees do.
So our current county levy outside of a municipality is 2.084, within the municipality it is 2.038.
So if we added a million dollar, per million dollar bond, can you give me an idea what that mill levy would be, by chance? And I will, I will not hold you to it, and I hope the public doesn't hold you to it as well.
So you're saying that we need to add another $1 million?
If we were to bond for $1 million, then I can extrapolate if it's 60 million, 50 million.
So, I'm thinking that the out of county, or out of municipality would be 2.216, and then within municipality it'd be 2.170, for another $1 million.
So what's the difference? Sorry. And I do appreciate, Dick, and the committee, it's always nice to have the best, if we're to say that for what the criteria that was presented, that one firm was better than the rest. Unfortunately, we've got the responsibility of how to get it paid for, and convince the taxpayers to support it, and money is always tight, as we have heard over and over and over again.
I'd say 60 cents per thousand.
60 cents per thousand, per million dollars?
Yes.
Six cents, wouldn't it?
Six cents, yes.
Six cents, thank you.
Six cents per thousand.
Yes.
Is that today's money?
That's right off the top of my head, my dear.
Yeah.
Are we going to have some more money available to you?
Yes. Yes.
It's, and I know school districts love being able to keep level, people, to me, if a bond's done, even if we're, it's an increase into their, into their pocketbook. If we don't remove something and just keep it level, that doesn't mean that we didn't raise their taxes, we raised their taxes, because they've already paid for something, and now we're adding something to it, so. We raised their taxes because they've already paid for something and now we're adding something to it, so. Yeah, I again will be on the record that it's going to be hard for me to go with the best as what has been presented. And it's going to be because of the money. It is a lot. It is just too much for me to, to support. And it might be the fact that I've gone, had done this before and I've talked to many other architectural firms. And I have gotten to know one of the ones that is the low. And I guess I don't share the concern after I have had the opportunity over several years to visit with them. I'll be on the record of that.
Madam Chair.
Yes, Commissioner.
When do the bonds go off for our existing courthouse? Carrie.
At this point, I think it's 2026.
And the highway department is sooner than that, correct?
No, the highway department is much later.
Much later.
Oh, all right.
I think it was.
When they go.
Madam Chair, if I may. Madam Chair, if the auditor could, just for the public. A quick reference from what the mill levy was on our assessed value when the courthouse was added versus now. So I think people would truly appreciate what the growth does for our county in reduction of responsibility. At least on assessed value of a property as we grow. That is a very valid and something that I hope we can share with the public over and over again. So they understand that they'll be paying less over time. It's just, it's something that we have to be considered, so. Madam Chair.
Madam Chair, I have a follow-up question for Sherri. What impact will, when those bonds are paid off, what will be the impact on our ability to pay?
Well, let's go with the first question first. That was, what was the, how was the levy changed? And how has it went down as those bonds get paid? Where did it start? If you don't have that information, Sherri.
Oh, no, I can find it. I just, when it's thrown at me in the middle of not knowing I was going to do it, I have to look for it.
And you're supposed to be off, Madam Chair, or Madam Auditor.
I'm never off work.
I know. Any other commissioners' thoughts? Commissioner Gibbons seems comfortable with the extra money. I may my concern. Commissioner Aaron's, any thoughts?
Yeah, thank you, Commissioner Poppins.
It's not my charity offer, I just.
No, I was about to ask the same question.
I think, I think you've asked good questions and it's always good to talk these things out. And more information's always better than less information. And I understand where you're coming from. If I had not gone through this process, I would have, I probably started this process sharing your concerns. That choosing the cheapest architect firm would be in the best interest of taxpayers. That's probably where I started. However, after speaking with Dick Strasburg extensively, hours and hours of conversations offline. And then going through the committee process. What I came to learn is that there is a, there's a big difference between firms that can just do the job. I think most, if not all, firms could do the job. But the real issue is in the quality of construction documents, the estimating and having the experience doing these jobs. And what Dick explained to the committee is that you always have to be concerned about firms that will offer a lower rate. Because there does tend to be a correlation with lower rates and lesser quality construction documents. And that was a real concern, real possibility. And then another possibility is, or I shouldn't say a possibility. What Dick explained to the committee is that by paying a little bit higher rate on the front end. You are able to see real substantial cost savings on the entire project. So for example, we may look at it today and say, well, geez, we should go with the cheaper alternative here. But in the long run, it actually costs you more money. Because this is a municipal project and it's not a private project where you have the bill payer constantly on top of the construction manager and on top of the architect. What I'll say, nickel and diming them or holding them accountable. In this instance, it's a municipal project and there does tend to be a little bit of, you know, there's the ability of architects as well as construction managers to want to creep on the project. And because we're a board or commission, you know, we have to act with a majority vote in order to hold those entities accountable. I think one of the builders in the process called it professional friction is what he referred to it as. And he says, when you do private projects, there's a lot of professional friction going on because they're, they're holding you accountable. And so in these municipal projects, they have a tendency to run away. And I mean run away in terms of scope and cost and things like that. And so I'm getting to the explanation here that by paying a little bit more upfront, according to Dick's experience in this process. You actually are buying, you are purchasing a service where they're going to hold the reins tighter on cost control down the road. And so when Dick says that paying a little more on the front end results in cost control on the back end. And he says that is his experience. And then the firms that come in, you know, talk about that process. That's what led me to believe to have that shift, to believe that paying a little more on the front end will save us money on the back end. And what that means is, that means it saves taxpayers money on the back end. And that's important, too.
Yeah, I don't disagree with that. It's just the unfortunate part, or the fortunate part is, this is significant difference. We're not talking half a percent. I would, I'd absolutely agree on half a percent. When we're talking even on a 60 million, which I think would be light if we do everything. Especially with their fee structure. I mean, you're talking a 2.2 million dollar differential right off the top. And then I'm now just glancing at some of the other expenses. And Dick, correct me, what is this feasibility study is 85,000? Is that, and then a reimbursable expense of another 95,000?
Yeah, that's correct.
We're over 2.3. So it's just, it's unfortunately not able for me to believe that there's going to be that much savings to the taxpayer. Point blank, that's it.
Madam Chair.
Go ahead, Commissioner Schmidt.
I'm going, I'm going to have to step aside and do some visiting with a doctor. I'll be back as soon as I can.
Okay. Well, that's all we can ask. I don't know what's going to happen here with this vote. So if we, if we need you, we'll call you so we can hopefully make a decision today. Otherwise, we might not be able to, but I'm hoping we can.
You can call me anytime.
Thank you.
If I'm, or I'll be back. Okay, thank you.
That's good, thanks.
So the levy question that you asked, we started out with the courthouse levy of 0.280 and it's now down to 0.082. The highway shop started at 0.099 and now it's down to 0.069. The highway shop started in 16, the courthouse started in 6.
Thank you, Madam Auditor.
Well, I agree with Commissioner Aaron's comments about saving money on the back end. We have to get the public on board with this on the front end. And we do want the most bang for our buck. So this is a very difficult decision that we need to make.
Madam Chair, could we discuss then location? Because I think there's some costs in there that is part of the whole project that are troublesome as well, that need to get resolved.
I think we're, I think that's going to get, I don't know that we can.
All right.
I don't know that it makes sense to look at that right now, but if you have something you want to say about it, go ahead. And maybe it's a question for Mr. Strasburg. I don't necessarily disagree with you, but I feel like we've got to get through this hurdle before we move on to the next one as to, you know, the exact location and site. Dick, did you want to add anything to that?
Yeah, in part of the scope of service that we have to use terms to propose on was evaluation of sites. So one of the first things they'll be doing is looking at sites.
Thank you. Any further discussion?
Madam Chair, Paul Paulson.
Yes, go ahead.
When we, when we interviewed these architects. It was really, I, to me, it was really night and day between the three groups. JLG came in. All the people involved in their project were there and spoke and were very knowledgeable. They're, I would say they're probably of these three groups, they're probably the youngest ones of the group, so they've probably got new ideas. And they had a lot of energy there. We go to the BKV group and those guys are, were all older that were there. I felt, and probably let's sit down and have a cigar and a drink is kind of the way that that came off to me. And the latest, Dick is the only one that ever spoke. He had 10 people there with him plus two sheriffs. And he's the only one that spoke to us, so we don't know, we didn't find out anything about these other people outside of what he wanted us to know. So I wasn't impressed with that at all. Just, that's just me on my impression of these three groups. And if I was doing a project, I would definitely, if it was my own project, which I'm not going to do, it would be JLG. And I can't, I believe what Dick says that it probably costs us more in the beginning. But it's going to be right when we're done. Thanks.
Does any, does anybody want any input? I know Judge Rosmussen was on our Zoom meeting. Does anybody want any input or have any questions for the court? Because I can give her a call if need be. Nobody? Okay. And I'm asking, I'm asking her if she wants to give some input, so we'll, I'll give her a minute here. Other comments, questions, concerns from any of the board members? All right. Is there a motion?
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Madam Chair, if there are no further comments or questions. I'll make a motion that this commission adopt the recommendation from the selection committee for Architect Engineer Services on the proposed Justice Center. And that we accept or begin, excuse me, let me restate that. We authorize Tegra to begin contract negotiations with JLG DLR. And if you need me to restate that, I will.
I don't need you to restate it. Does anybody else?
And if, just for clarity, is then authorized, because we'll have to authorize an $85,000 payment to start, correct? Is that going to be part of your motion or is that going to be a separate?
I don't know that to be the case. Let's ask Dick Strasburg that question.
Yeah, Dick, do we, are you negotiating all aspects of this? I'm assuming the answer is yes, but.
Yeah.
So we don't need that right now.
And.
The only reason I ask that, excuse me, Madam Chair, is if, and I still believe, as I did even two years ago, that time is of essence. The quicker we can get moving, the better. So if we need to be authorizing the payment, if that is the action of the board, that we get this done and get it moving as quick as possible, so. But I, point of order on myself, we don't have a second even yet. I should hold.
Right. Is there a second?
I'll second it, Madam Chair.
Okay. Any further discussion?
Yeah, it's just clarity on that, I guess, so. Because time is of essence and I don't know if, if the group, if that discussion was ever taken into consideration. Which team is ready to hit the ground today and can have this project done the most time effectively, so.
Commissioner Poppins, just to address your concern. I can't address it directly with regard to how fast things will move. But what I can say here, and I don't know if it addresses your concern or not. We are following the standardized process here by authorizing Tegra to enter into contract negotiations. That municipal entities like many Haha County and others have used when they follow this exact process. So just so the public knows, but also to hopefully, you know, maybe it only partially addresses your concern. We are following the standardized process for here in South Dakota. How, you know, how a county would proceed when it wants to do a project like this.
Any further discussion? If not, Sherri, we call the roll.
Commissioner Aaron's?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbons?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
No.
Commissioner Landine?
This is a fun position to be in. I'm so on the fence on the cost. But this did come down from a recommendation through a very extensive interview process that I participated in. And the numbers are what the numbers are in the overall committee selection. And so I'm going to vote yes. The motion carries. We'll move on to our next item. Recommendation from the selection committee for the construction manager services on the proposed Justice Center. And Dick, do you want to tee this up?
Sure. So we went through the same process with the contractors. We issued an RFP. We had three responses, Henry Carlson Construction, McGough Construction, and G A Johnson Construction. In the RFP and in the selections here, we went through the, you know, selection criteria and it focused on experience with courts and jails. Qualifications with the same size and same type of facilities. Availability of the team, technical work process, pre-construction process based on similar projects. Local subcontractor relationships and then others that you'll see on the sheet here that's up on the screen. So we went through that process and there it was, the committee selected the recommendation to go with McGough. I'm sorry, with, I'm sorry, with Henry Carlson. And a lot of debate with G A Johnson and McGough because they're both very, very well qualified teams. But the committee went with Henry Carlson. So we could probably have a discussion on questions and so on with that.
Was there a fee structure with this as well?
Yes. There's a fee structure on that. I think some of this, I'm going to take, being that this is governed by the South Dakota law. I'm going to ask Bill to step in in terms of how much of this we should share about the teams that were not selected.
Yeah, understood. And maybe that's information. And maybe that's information that we probably don't want to go into right now. Bill, what, what do you want to say to us?
I was going to say, as far as the fee structure goes, if the commissioners want to know, but there is a statute on point that until selection is made, that information remains sealed until you make a selection.
Understood.
I, I need to see the fee structure, so, thank you.
So commissioners can see it, it's just not a public--
I think, I think Sherri's probably getting that right now.
Is it Dick or whoever seen it, is it as wide as what we saw in the architectural firms? No? Okay.
Percentage-wise, yes.
I, hold on.
I'll just wait till I see them. Thank you.
I'll let the document speak for itself.
Thank you.
But I didn't think it was as wide as what it was with the architects.
Yeah, if we look at it on a percentage basis, it is about, actually, Bill, I'm not sure how much I can say.
I have the document, thank you, Dick, so.
Okay, thank you.
There is an outlier on there, as you can see.
That's different. That's different. This is, it's not that--
Okay, I thought it was.
No, no, no.
And was, were these numbers shared with the committee then?
After--
Yeah.
After the--
After the vote, after the, the--
After the selection, after the discussion on the qualifications, but not, and it was shared in both cases before the vote.
Was this a clear decision, too, recommendation? Clear number one? Clear number one, clear number two, and clear number three?
There was a clear number one, and two and three were, I would say, somewhat tied, well below number one.
I, I would agree with Commissioner Ehrens' statement about the rankings on the construction manager.
Just so I'm clear, you've, both of you have at least seen these numbers, the, the one that was, is being recommended is by far, is still is the highest fee structure as well. So we're adding anywhere from extra 75 percentage points to over a full percentage point on top of the three and a half, over 3% on the thing. I, Madam Chair, it just, it just amazes me, we come from a pretty work ethic community. Chevy does very well in our, in our midst. It's a very functioning vehicle. GMC is probably ranked a little bit better. Then you have the Cadillac, all in the same general motor feel. You know, I, as I worked hard, very hard to present a very cost-effective proposal the first go-round, it just amazes me that we're looking at not Chevy, we're not looking at GMC, we're looking at Cadillac. So. And unless someone tells me one of these firms, even with the architecture, can't do the job, it just amazes, it just amazes me.
I think we had the benefit, I mean, I think all three of these companies are great companies. My, my recollection was that the Henry Carlson Group was, I think, pretty much by a majority of everybody there was decided. That was, again, before we looked at any cost.
I will, absolutely, and again, the three firms that did the architecture, I've, you know, I've spoken with all of them at one time or another. I think they're very good firms, and, and these three local, for the same are excellent firms. Proud that they all submitted a proposal. It just, it's extreme, it just makes our job that much more difficult when we're looking at limited dollars to get this done, thing done, because that's the ultimate goal, is to get it done. So, because we have, we've wasted $15 million now already in delays and, and, and extra costs, so I will support the Henry Carlson on this, as it is a recommendation, but it's not going to make our job easy convincing the public when we start crunching the numbers and we add an extra 5% to the total project over what numbers that had been presented, because that will be public. So, thank you.
Understood.
Well, Commissioner Poppins, if I might say this, if I had my druthers and I was doing a private project, the, one of the companies on here that was not ranked the highest would have been my choice. They're local, they're competent, they're a Lincoln County taxpayer, very effective company, very good company that has excellent experience building jails, and, but sometimes their own personal, you know, unfortunately, personal opinion had to give way to what was in the best, what we thought was in the best interest of the county, and I, I think that's why you see the rankings you do.
Any further discussion? If not, is there a motion?
Madam Chair, I'll make a motion that the commission adopt the selection committee for construction manager services recommendation to, and authorize Tegra Group to enter into negotiations with Henry Carlson Company.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Any further discussion? If not, Sherri, will you call the roll?
Commissioner Ehrens?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbons?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Landine?
Yes. Motion carries. Consider a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
I'll second.
Thank you, Sherri.
Commissioner Ehrens?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbons?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Landine?
Yes. Thanks, everyone. Have a wonderful Easter weekend.